Good evening and welcome to the February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five work session and call board meeting of the Barrow County Board of Education. At this time, the meeting is now called to order and we'll begin with our superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you and thank you, board members, for being here this evening. I got a few bright spots I'd like to highlight this evening. First of all, we were able to have our star student and teacher celebration hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. Many thanks to our, our chamber here. Proud to announce that Appalachia, Mr. Christopher Skyler Mack was our star student. And we are incredibly proud of Skyler and all of our, our star students and teachers. Bassa Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl team placed first at the Eastern Regional Competition and they advanced to the state competition at the University of Georgia on March twenty second. Our Winder Barrow Double G Bulldogs have advanced to the Elite Eight and they compete at Woodward Academy tomorrow evening. Our Lady Dogs qualified for the state playoffs and our Bassa Literacy Team placed first in the region. And excited that we'll have several students moving on to state there as well. So a lot of great things going on in our school system and excited to see how our students close out the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ladev. All right, we'll move on with presentations and discussions and start with Dr. Bowen. Support Services.
Good evening. I bring to you a safety update today with two informational items. Number one is we are now conducting daily weapons detection scanning in all of our schools, grade six through twelve. That's over eighty-two hundred students that are getting scanned every morning in under thirty minutes. So I want to give a big thank you out to those scanning teams, the admin that are here tonight that are leading that and how efficient they are. Ever since the second day from middle schools, they've been under thirty minutes. Had a chance to observe all four of those schools last week and they're doing a remarkable job. I appreciate their energy and dedication to, to making this work. Each of their buildings is slightly different, but they're, they're doing it very efficiently and using it as a positive opportunity for student interaction. High schools are continuing on their great work as well. So thank you to the middle and high schools. Number two item is we're currently working out some details and logistics for issuing decals of student picture identification. These decals will be placed on student laptops and this will serve as a readily available identification tool. There's any question to a student's identity and necessary purpose in our buildings. This will occur in both middle schools and high schools. We hope to get this done in the next couple of weeks by the start of fourth, nine weeks. And the reason that, one of the reasons we're going to use the laptops, it helps you identify laptop to kid. But also in the morning scanning, they pass these laptops around the metal detectors. So therefore we have staff that are interacting with the laptop and have placing a laptop, pairing a laptop with a student. So you have opportunity there for them to confirm who they are if there's any question. Obviously, many of our scanning teams are getting to know students even better than they did before, which is also a great safety tool for us as well. So we're looking forward to that. We're working out the best way to do that as far as the printing goes and the labels go. So we hope to, to get that worked out this week and then begin with the, the best way to pull those out of our infinite campus. We think we can do it ourselves without using another vendor and get those out to the schools. Are there any questions on those items or any others?
Dr. Bowen, for, for students that may not have a picture, because obviously pictures are not mandatory in schools. So what's the plan in place for making sure that if they don't have an IC photo?
We had already been doing an audit of that from earlier this year. Thank you for bringing that up because we had noticed some, some needs there. So that's already taking place now and what we're able to do is in those infinite campus pictures are not just being imported from our, our picture vendors anymore. Our schools are taking pictures in the moment when they discover those missing and we're getting those uploaded right away. So that's helped us fill in a lot of those missing pictures, but this process will also help us even more to see when we start running and merging and seeing what's missing, which allows us to update it even better. So.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bowen. We appreciate all the good work you're doing to keep our schools safe. All right, we'll move on to Business Services with Ms. Houston.
Good evening. Tonight you will be voting on opting out of House Bill five eighty-one. House Bill five eighty-one establishes a statewide floating homestead exemption that limits the annual increase in property tax assessments on homesteaded properties to the inflation rate of the previous year. This bill was created when the Board of Educate, this bill was created after the Board of Education unanimously voted on the Barrow County School System age-based tax exemption that significantly helps our senior citizens. The Board was forward-thinking and created that local legislation in September of two thousand and twenty-three. The age-based tax exemption will help our low to mid-income seniors with their school property taxes. We will lose the tax on those exempted properties. If we do not opt out of House Bill five eighty-one, our tax digest will be capped on homesteaded properties on the, on top of the millage rate capped for school systems. It is the Finance Department's assessment that we cannot afford both of these exemptions. House Bill five eighty-one went into effect on January first and in that bill, our legislators included a clause where municipalities and school systems could opt out. We have produced the potential impact on the school system had the bill been in place over the past seven years and shared that presentation with the Board of Education. In order to opt out, the school system was required to hold three public hearings for community input. Those meetings were advertised on our website and in the Barrow News Journal at minimum of one week prior to each meeting. The meetings were held on January thirtieth at six P M., February sixth at two P M. and February sixth at five thirty P M. All requirements have been met in order to opt out of this bill. Tonight will be the final vote. If the school system opts out, we will deliver the packet down to the Secretary of State's office tomorrow in order to meet the March first deadline. Next Tuesday, for my next item, this vote on the board, on the bonds will be next Tuesday. So next Tuesday, we will be selling approximately forty-four million dollars in bonds to be used for capital projects. We will make bond payments out of the ELOS one cent sales tax proceeds. Tom Owens will be here to present the winning bid to you and the Board will vote to accept that bid.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Houston. We'll move the bond resolution to consent agenda next week. And then we'll vote on House Bill five eighty-one in the after-work session. All right, System Operations, Mr. Purno.
Good evening. Before we give our update on the Performing Arts Center, I do want to say for Wyandotte Barrow High School and Appalachia High School, where we have our pod projects taking place, part of those projects is a greenhouse at each location to replace the greenhouses that they have currently. Those units are being manufactured currently and we expect to have those on-site and in place this summer for next school year. And this is something that we've been in communication with the school principals and our CTAE Director, Dr. Jennifer Wood. And so just kind of want to give that update. When we talk about the pods, haven't said a whole lot about that. For Wyandotte Barrow High School, we received our land disturbance permit yesterday and we are meeting with the school on Monday to talk through the, the schedule for placement of that pod. So we're, we're moving along in those areas, but if there are any questions about the pods or the greenhouses, I'm going to try to answer those. Okay. For our Performing Arts Center, we're moving, moving along very well there and our, yeah, we, we expect to be substantially complete in April and we'll still have things to do beyond that. Quite a bit actually, our I T folks, business services, maintenance, staff, we all have tasks to perform in there. But coming along very well, very excited about that project and saw some of the athletic pieces there as well. I know tennis courts are being used by Bassa now and so we're, we're pleased with where we're headed there. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Purno. All right, move on to Teaching and Learning with Dr. Moten.
Good evening. The Teaching and Learning Report consists of three items. We have an overview of dual enrollment from Dr. Jennifer Wood and members of her team. And then we have advanced placement, African-American Studies and the literacy screening data. For dual enrollment, this program is designed to prepare students for college and career opportunities, leading students to post-secondary institutions for an industry-recognized certification or licensure, an associate and/or higher college degree and successful employment. Georgia has created a singular program known as dual enrollment for students in grades ten through twelve who qualify to participate in dual enrollment. Students may enroll on a part-time or full-time basis as dual enrollment students take college courses at their high school or on a post-secondary campus or school and they also earn college credit while they are taking, uh, courses in high school. So we have some good results to share and good information to share on the dual enrollment program in Barrow County schools. I'd like to welcome Dr. Jennifer Wood, our CTAE Director, and she is the CEO of Sims. And she has Mr. Clay McElhaney and Mr. Mike Culp with her this evening and they serve in the capacity of work-based learning and college and career advisement respectfully. Dr. Wood?
Thank you. I apologize. It's, I don't feel bad. It just sound bad. So I'm glad I have my team to sort of help me out with this today. So we want to just thank you guys for the opportunity to talk about dual enrollment and what it offers to our students and our families here in Barrow County. Dr. Moten did some introductions, but we also have some special guests that I would like to introduce. When I call your name, will you guys stand up for me? So tonight, joining us with our partnership from Linear Tech, we have Chip Reynolds, who serves as the Campus Dean for the Barrow and Jackson Linear Tech. We have Holly Bates and Holly serves as the, uh-oh, don't tell me, Director of Admissions for Linear Tech. And then we have Samantha Starkey, who works at the Linear Tech Barrow Campus as their dual enrollment coordinator. So we're excited to have our partners here joining us and supporting us tonight. And then, of course, we have Clay and Mike, who you'll hear from today, who are valuable members of all the work that we do for our students at Sims. So Dr. Moten mentioned that we're going to talk about dual enrollment. We're going to try to highlight some of the benefits for our students and then really just thank you guys and encourage you to continue supporting our dual, our dual enrollment efforts here in Barrow County. So Mike, I'm going to let you talk for a little bit.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak to you tonight on dual enrollment. As Dr. Moten has already shared, there's a lot of things about dual enrollment that hopefully you guys already come in with a working knowledge of. And you're a young-looking group that looks like they've all had a chance at some dual enrollment classes in high school. I hope you did and were able to take advantage of those, but it's a wonderful opportunity for our students. It's a great opportunity for students to be able to avoid the duplication that happens in education, right? You go to high school and you take U.S. History and then what's the first thing you're going to take when you get to college? U.S. History. Wouldn't it be nice just to take it once? I found myself saying that, but as you can tell by the gray hairs on my face, I did not get those opportunities maybe at that point in time. Or maybe I just wasn't inquisitive enough to learn about those. But it's a really great opportunity for students to go ahead and start taking those college courses while they're still in high school. As you can see from the screen, the academic rigor that dual enrollment provides is significant. It allows students an opportunity, not necessarily to be stretched like an A.P. class would. An A.P. class is intense. Dual enrollment class is also intense, but in a different way. A.P. class may have a hundred and fifty assignments across the whole year that they're going to be graded in. A dual enrollment class may have five. So there's a different level of intensity. And so a lot of our students find that they're very successful and I'm sure we'll talk a little bit about success rates in a little bit. But dual enrollment is one of those few high school programs in existence and there's very few of them that we can say this about is for all kids. It's for kids that are college-bound and it's for kids who are not college-bound. And I love that because we serve all students and dual enrollment unabashedly does that. Dual enrollment can be career technical and it can also be academic in nature. And I remind all of our students that if you're considering going over and learning our welding trade, get ready for a hard class. There's assignments, there's tests, there's responsibilities tied to that class. And we want to make sure that when we certify a student in welding, they know how to weld. We're going to drive across bridges tonight that have been welded, right? These people are going to be certified welders in our community and if they're not ready for that task, people's lives are at danger. That's different than a high school-level CTAE class. Those are a lot of times an introduction to the material and, and an idea of would you like this maybe? And when we get through these certification courses, they walk out, they'll graduate with a high school diploma and those certifications, which is going to enable them to do so many things in life. Many of our welding students are currently making about nineteen dollars an hour from Kubota Caterpillar as the welding students in our program. If they will continue with that and work towards their diplomas, I have a student that's making thirty-nine dollars an hour, which is wonderful. So also for our students that are taking the academic courses, it's a great way to get a twenty-five percent off coupon for college, right? We're going to have enough time to get their freshman year done. That means I'm not going to pay tuition. It means I'm not going to have to get a dorm. It means I'm not going to have to buy a meal plan. And any parents have written checks in the room tonight. You know what I'm talking about. If we could cut twenty-five percent off of that or anybody with a student loan still paying it off, if you could reduce that by twenty-five percent, would you? Yes. And that's what you're providing our students. Dual enrollment gives students that opportunity. It makes them more successful at the college later on because, and we'll show you some of those statistics. But if you want to do any kind of research on your own, the National Alliance of Concurrent Enrollment Partnerships is a organization that is all about dual enrollment. That's what they do. And they have study after study after study after study that show the benefits for students. Let me see here. That's okay. That's all right. We'll keep going. I'll take that as a, a sign from above that I need to keep going. Okay. I've never been accused of being brief. So the Accelerated Career Education Program, I want to make sure I have an opportunity to talk to you guys about this because there is now two ways students can graduate from high school. When I was in high school, we had a college prep diploma and a technical diploma. And many of you guys are nodding your heads because you remember that time as well. We were graduating students on college prep diplomas that were heading to college and they were being prepared for that. We also had students that were going on a technical diploma and they were being introduced to a lot of high school-level stuff, but they weren't walking out certified in anything. The program that I'm going to talk about tonight, Accelerated Career Education, ACE or X, ACD is what we call it, Accelerated Career Diploma, is another diploma option where students can earn nine high school courses, two English, two math, two science, two social studies and a health and P.E. And then go and earn two, at least two certificates from the technical college and be able to graduate from high school with a real diploma, not written in crayon. It's the real deal is what I tell parents. It's the same one everybody's getting. Oh, but they're also earning these two certifications that all the other kids are not earning. So they walk out of high school, work-ready and ready to make a paycheck. And I love this program. We currently have about thirty-seven students in the district that are doing that and we are really excited. But also with any kind of diploma change that we ever do for a parent or for a student, it requires a meeting with a parent. They need to know what their, their student is asking for. So we will have that introductory meeting, draw up a graduation plan for that student and help them see how this diploma track works for them and how they can make the biggest advantage of it.
All right. Good evening. My name's Clay McElhaney and I do work-based learning for Bassa. I'm a small part of the dual enrollment team, but it's been really great. So the last three years I get to really see, because work-based learning and dual enrollment go hand-in-hand, how we can better support our students. Because usually if students are taking dual enrollment, they're also taking work-based learning. We're seeing them matriculate through their CTA pathway, like let's say agriculture. We're getting them a job and they're also taking dual enrollment classes. So it's, it's great to see the full picture. So what you're looking at now is fresh data. So this is from the Dual Enrollment Digest that the University of System of Georgia in two thousand and twenty-five just released. And we base everything off data, right? We're data-driven in the school system. We're also data-driven in Sims. We want to make sure that we're supporting our students and we're correcting anything that we see we can correct. So if you look at it, they have a record-high enrollment. So fall two thousand and twenty-four, we're sitting at around twenty-one thousand students in the state of Georgia that are in dual enrollment. And what's really great about that is around fall two thousand and twenty, they were around nineteen thousand. That was the previous highest. They were like, man, once COVID hit, it drops like a lot. And they were like, it might be ten, twenty years before we ever get back to that enrollment number. And look at us, we're four years, we're already exceeding that and you can see the increase. We're at a forty percent increase from fall two thousand and twenty-three. We're fifty-four percent higher from the previous high of fall two thousand and twenty. And that lets you know that the trend is only, you know, exponentially growing. And that's what we also see at Sims. If you look at us for the last like six semesters, we're only growing also. So it's good to see that we have similar data from the state of Georgia. The other thing that you see is higher college retention rates. So eighty-six percent of dual enrollment students remain in college after their first year compared to seventy-three percent of their counterparts or people who do not have any dual enrollment, which you're seeing about thirteen percent, you know, change there, which is great, right? We almost see that in CTAE in terms of graduation rate, right? The other thing that I like to point out is when you see that, you're also thinking about enhanced persistence, right? So there's, like Mike said, data that supports that if you take dual enrollment, you're going to persevere and have better persistence as you matriculate into college or even a skilled trade, right? So dual enrollment students also GPA-wise outperform their counterparts in every university sector. So GPA-wise at our R-one research university, like let's say UGA, they're almost a half letter grade higher GPA-wise. And then in state colleges for dual enrollment, you're almost gaining a whole letter grade where you feel more prepared and students are having more success. And the undertone of that report is the state of Georgia is looked at as a leader in dual enrollment. A lot of other states want to do a lot of R and D research from the state of Georgia, which we call ripoff and duplicate. Like how do we model this? Like how, our partnership with Linear Tech, right? How do other states model that and compare to what we're actually doing with college and career academies? So it's really nice to see.
All right. So what does that look like for Barrow County and Barrow County students? So we put some information on this slide, but you can see, we think one of the biggest benefits to our students and our families is if you see that first number, that's almost five hundred thousand dollars in tuition that families and students are not having to pay. And that's just based on an average price of a college credit. So if I'm going to another university, that price is going to be higher, right? So that's a huge safety. So that's a huge saving to our families. And that's just in one year. Like, that's not collective. That's just in one year of classes that our students are taking. There is a benefit to our high schools. I know we talk a lot about classrooms and, you know, space at our high schools. Well, by offering dual enrollment in Barrow County, and they're able to come to our campus at Sims and take academic classes or some technical classes, and then they're able to walk right up. That's one of the best things that Barrow County has done for its students, is really enter into a very purposeful partnership with building of Sims as the college and career academy, and then putting Lanier Tech on the same exact campus. There are other college and career academies and high schools and districts that don't have that benefit of their students, to be able to just walk up to a building or stay in a current building and take those classes. So we're able to reduce the number of classrooms needed at the high schools. We're able to reduce the number of teachers because Lanier Tech provides the majority of our instructors, so they come into our building to teach. We have about, currently, about 618 students that have participated, and that's just at Lanier Tech. So our students are able to take dual enrollment at any college or university that they can get into as far as their acceptance. But when we're talking these numbers, we're talking dual enrollment at Lanier Tech. We have almost a 90% pass rate for our, that's just this fall, looking at those grades for our students, so we know they're being successful. Again, there's a list of the courses, the total number of courses that students take. So when you see over 1,000 courses being taken, that's multiple students taking multiple courses, and that's what we want to see. And another benefit and impact on Barrow County is that we're still earning FTE funding for these students, whether they're in an academic class or where they're in a CTAE class. So if they're taking welding, we're still earning FTE for those students because they're high school students.
Okay. I'm back, sorry. So what you're seeing now is a year look like in terms of support for our students, and this is really important. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this, but I think it's really important to know, like, month by month, they have support structure in place and things that they can go to to be successful, right? So in July and August, we're basically going to begin with our family orientation and student orientation sessions. So during these events, you're basically meeting with families about the whole process in dual enrollment, outline the requirements, the expectations. That's when Mike gets real scary and talks about, you know, all his wisdom about what we expect for dual enrollment. And you talk about scheduling, right? Because that's going to be really important, especially for those juniors and seniors. As we move forward, we let them get their feet wet. So now it's like September, we're still meeting with them and supporting them. But then October rolls around, and we host a time management workshop where basically students can come in, they get organizational skills, they get study skills. We talk to them about how to balance that high school and now college classes, college-level coursework. Also, in October, we organize the eighth-grade career fair as part of the Bridge Build Initiative. And the people who showed up at BASSA's gym this past fall, that's basically what we had, we rolled in every eighth grader in Barrow County, and they actually got to see CTA pathway aligning with a career that they can take. And it hopefully will get them to envision what they can take faster and be willing to sign up for dual enrollment to see, hey, is this a career for me? Should I start on this pathway, right? So the fair is supposed to highlight CTAE and dual enrollment programs. So come November, we offer a debt-free degree workshop, which helps families navigate financial aid options like FAFSA. If you haven't done FAFSA lately, everybody needs help with FAFSA. Scholarships, other cost savings strategies for higher education. And it's crucial that they understand how attainable and affordable it is, meaning free, and as well as see a vision for them to move forward past high school to finish their degree. Moving into January, where we just were, we, all about recruiting at all three high schools and engaging students during their lunch periods to spark interest in dual enrollment pathways. Later in January, which we just had, was mandatory parent student information sessions, and they were all three high schools during the week. And then if they can't make it during the week, we hold a Saturday information session for parents to be able to attend that one also. And then what's really remarkable is, from that, 510 brand-new students are ready to explore dual enrollment. So that's not counting the juniors we're going to get next year as seniors. There's 510 brand-new students to dual enrollment is the latest numbers. In February, where we currently are, is my favorite, is they're going to start doing their paperwork for Lanier Tech's dual enrollment program at Sims and doing their applications. And what we're also going to do is expand students' awareness for professional opportunities. As today, we had a healthcare fair. So basically, we had industry here in Barrow County and surrounding counties where we had all healthcare students from all three high schools come in. We served them lunch. We had panel discussions. We showed them all around Lanier Tech. And then we had employers and industry lined up where they could sit and talk to them about dental hygienists, any types of careers that we had there. Next week, we have engineering also that's going to happen. So we like to show them through career fairs and have small groups of students around. And we held that at Lanier Tech, which was fantastic today. In March, we're going to actively engage and register students for their college classes, I believe, at BASSA, it's like March 21st. And then March and April, we're also going to have a trade and tech career day. So previously, you heard me say healthcare and engineering, but we don't forget about everything else. So we get the rest of everyone else through a trade and tech career day. So we do that for everyone else to kind of get the rest of the group benefit also. Finally, in April and May, the Career Center and Dual Enrollment Coordinators, the counselors, the data clerks of all three high schools work together to approve classes for state funding and place these courses in infinite campus schedules, which is really the brunt of the work. And then through this timeline that you actually see, our goal's the same. Like, we all want our students to have guidance and knowledge to understand how to be successful, right?
Okay. I promise we're almost done. So this is simply a list of what's currently offered as our technical certificate programs, and then also all of those academics. So all of those academics listed are offered inside of Sims. Automotive, engineering, industrial systems are at Lanier Tech. Culinary is offered inside Sims. Cybersecurity is an online program. We hope to offer a design and media production. Early childhood firefighter is in Sims. Nurse aide and welding are at Lanier Tech. And so as the governor is rolling out the high-demand list and naming Georgia as the top state for talent, we're really watching what those are, and then we're talking with our partners to say, what else can we add and what else can we offer to our students?
This is my favorite part of the meeting because I get to thank you guys and thank your predecessors because none of us are where we are today by our own actions. Sometimes we're helped there. And so I just want to thank them because, and you, because of what you guys do to make this program work. I've worked in a lot of districts. I've been everywhere. And I've never been somewhere that buses kids to a college back and forth every day. That's breaking barriers, y'all. That is setting kids up for success regardless of their zip code, regardless of their parents' income. Everybody has a shot at it. Because in the other districts I've worked at, if you had a car, you could do this. But if you don't have a car, I don't know what you're going to do. Maybe you can take an online class. Hopefully, that works for you, but maybe not. So the transportation's huge. And I want to thank you also for creating an opportunity for Lanier Tech to be able to move in and make a home here so that we can benefit from them because we benefit from them. And the opportunities that our kids have at their fingertips is absolutely amazing. And then also with Sims, I mean, creating that space for dual enrollment partnerships to happen. So I just want to thank you so much for that investment and just hope that as the days go by, you continue to see the value in it. There's so many places that we have an opportunity to have effect. This one has a huge one.
So just the last slide again. We just, obviously, we're very passionate about dual enrollment and the opportunities it provides our students. And we just want to thank you. We want to thank you for your support, and we look forward to your continued support. And we hope that we continue to expand and grow the opportunities that we can offer at Sims and through Lanier Tech. So we thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. Any questions? Does anybody have?
I just want to thank you, Dr. Wood, and your team, and the Lanier Tech, Mr. Reynolds, and the Lanier Tech team. Such good work, and you know this is dear to my heart.
Yes.
You've been talking my lung language for about 15 minutes.
Yep, I know. And we were talking about the whole campus, and I was, Chip and I were talking today, and I was like, I don't think anybody on this board was around when Sims was built and then when Lanier Tech. And I was like, oh, Lisa can speak to that and how intentional that was and just how powerful it is for our district. So we thank you guys.
I will say, as a high schooler, I was going to the downtown Lanier Tech option for dual enrollment, and at the time, there was four courses offered.
There you go.
So, and I took advantage of two of them. So it's really great to see.
Yeah, how much we've expanded. Yep. Well, thank you guys very much.
And that's what I wanted to say. When I came back on the board, from being heavily involved as a partner and having a husband that's a recruiter, you know, finding these kind of jobs.
Yes.
It's important. And to have this available for our students and to see how it's grown is awesome. When I came back and I heard what we're doing here in Barrow County, to have three kids that have gone through college, and like one of y'all said about who has student loans you're still paying on, I don't know which one of my kids that we're still paying on because my husband covered really good for one of them and said it was, they were paying us back. And now that I've had to take over the bills for the last four months, no, they're not paying us back. We're paying it. But most of them think, God got a scholarship. You know, that was, I guess, he probably made too much money, and that was a part that was our portion.
Yeah.
But I wish they had had this great of a program back then because that, parents just don't know what an asset that really is to be able to have your kids.
Yeah, it's free college.
Finish, yeah, finish school and have that.
Yep.
But that's a great asset. And I just think that it's great if we can continue to expand on that, not only for the parents here, but also for businesses.
Absolutely.
To be able to pull those skills.
Yep.
I think that's great.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wood and team. The next item for teaching and learning is the Advanced Placement or AP African-American Studies course that Appalachian High School is interested in adding for students for next year. The purpose of the course is to expand the number of Advanced Placement courses offered and are available to students. This course is described by College Board as a course that offers students a rich, evidence-based encounter with African-American experiences. In the course, students, number one, develop historical, literary, visual, and data analysis skills. Number two, they engage with primary sources daily. And third, they access a digital collection from the Smithsonian. There is a requirement by the College Board that all students must be given access to college-level text no older than 10 years past the publishing date. The textbook proposed for adoption to accompany the course is entitled "The African-American Odyssey" by Hein Hein and Harold. It's the seventh edition, published in 2019. This course is one of four sample curricular and classroom resources included in the example textbooks listed by College Board on the Advanced Placement Central website. The price of the text is $79. There is some additional information included about the text. So Appalachian High School, as I mentioned, is interested in adding this course, and we wanted to bring you information about the course and about the text. As the SGT considers this text, we will have it available for review in case there are questions about it. In addition, there are some attachments. Rochelle, if you'll click on the first one, as I said, this is a course from College Board. There is an overview of the course that describes the skills that students will acquire, the content of the course, information about the assessment, and some sample assessment items. The next attachment shows the course at a glance. And again, it goes into what the actual course content is, the plan, the information that teachers will use, and several topics are listed there, numerous topics are listed there, rather. And then the last document is actually a 441-page document, but it is a description of the exam for the course. So again, we're not asking that you take any action tonight. This is information for your awareness and consideration as Appalachian continues to explore adding this course to their course offerings. Any questions about the course?
Is this going to be a, if they do go ahead, you know, and request to go with this, is this going to be elective?
It is an elective. Yes, and it will be offered to students who are in the AP, the Advanced Placement courses.
Okay.
Is this the only text that is out there for these courses? I think you mentioned there were four different. What made this one the one that you guys decided to go with?
That was the decision that the teachers who will actually be teaching the course, they vet the materials that are available on the College Board website, which is not the only ones that they can use, but College Board lists examples of text and resources. And so they chose from that list. And based on the content and the way that it is introduced and the contemporary alignment that is of interest to students is the primary reason that teachers chose this particular text.
All right. Thank you for that information, Dr. Moten.
And then the last item, we have provided you with results from our university, I'm sorry, our universal screening that has been administered across the district as required by Senate Bill 48. And you do have actual numbers listed for the district and for the schools. And this is, beginning this year, we're required to administer the assessments to all K3 students three times per year. And the purpose of the administration of the assessment is to identify students who exhibit characteristics of dyslexia. So at the top of the page is information that reflects our school-wide data. And you can see there that for first grade, approximately from at the beginning of the year and then the middle of the year, and then you also see two assessments listed there. DIBELS is the assessment that we use for our district, the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy, and then ACADIANCE is only used with two schools. And that is schools who are included in the L4GA grant, that is Auburn and Statham. And the difference there between DIBELS and ACADIANCE primarily is the content of the assessment. There are some skills that are tested on one that are not tested on the other, but they both test students for early literacy skills. And as I said, Auburn and Statham are included under ACADIANCE because of their affiliation with the L4GA grant. But you can see at the beginning of the year with DIBELS, approximately 33% of our students in grades K through 3 demonstrated that there was a risk of a significant reading deficiency. We administered it again in December, and then you can see the results there. What you do see is that the trend is going down. We went from fall to winter from 33% of students indicating a reading deficiency to 29%. And then we go into each school. So you're able to see, and I will not read the results for every single school, but at your leisure, you can see the results by school there, how many students demonstrated significant reading deficiency at the beginning of the year and then the growth that they demonstrated by the middle-of-the-year assessment. We actually also give you the number of students in addition to the percentage of students by grade level and how they scored. There's an actual number of students by school as well. And as you scroll through, you can see that data is there for every single school. At this time, approximately for all of our At this time, approximately for all of our schools, under twenty-seven percent of student, the highest that we've seen is about twenty-seven percent of students demonstrating a reading difficulty, according to DIBELS. And then those students are screened farther to identify whether or not they demonstrate further characteristics of dyslexia. And so our goal is to continue with the high-quality instructional materials that were approved for the district to provide quality instruction to students, to continue to administer the assessments in accordance with the Senate bill. They'll be assessed again in the spring. And as we see the trend by school and by the district, we're seeing that the trend is decreasing. Some decreases are smaller by school than others, but overall, we do see fewer and fewer students demonstrating signs of being at risk for a significant reading deficiency. So we appreciate your support in purchasing those high-quality materials. We appreciate all of the support in getting the materials that teachers need in their hands. Any questions about the data for the universal screening?
No, but I will comment that I did see a lot of the progress, like looking from school to school, so this is super helpful.
Yes.
Thank you for preparing this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Okay, we'll move on to Human Resources. Dr. Kurtz.
Good evening. The Human Resources Department has one information item this evening. We'd like to provide the board in public with a hiring update. It's an exciting time of year in education as we, our leaders and our schools are starting to recruit and hire for next year. We have our allotments and are excited about moving forward. Hiring the best is what really sets us up for success in future years, and so we want to get on that early and make sure that we're making good decisions. While we added a number of new positions to Barrow County last year, moving into this year, we expect overall staffing levels to remain fairly flat moving into next year. In order to maintain staffing levels and ensure schools have the resources they need, we've developed some standard ratios for assigning teachers and staff to schools at each level, elementary, middle, and high. When we apply those and we start to look at our growth projections, it's requiring us to move some folks from here to there. So every single school and program is adding or losing for the most part across the district, adding or reducing staff. Our school leaders did a wonderful job working with their staff and are still doing that, working with each other and working with our HR department, because we wanted to get the best of the best exactly where they want to be. And once we have our internal folks placed, we can start to open up those positions. The leadership has moved very quickly on that, so we've been able to open external positions and are excited to be hiring right now. The, our goal throughout this process is to keep the best educators while attracting some more great folks to our schools. And hiring early is a really important part of that. Placing everybody, of course, is a necessary step, and because we were able to do that quickly, we are already out there hiring. We have positions posted as of this afternoon at almost every single building and in almost every single content, but we also have positions outside of direct teaching. We need people feeding our kids, driving our kids. We need people making sure that we're paying all our bills properly from our schools, receiving our money properly and accounting for those things. So if anyone would like an exciting career in education, would like a chance to make a difference for your community, for the kids in the community, and have a great time doing it, I would encourage you to check out our website. Ask us how we can help you get into one of those jobs, because we would love to see great folks in front of our kids and making a difference. Any questions about where we are with hiring right now?
When will we, did you just say that the internal decisions have, for the most part, been ironed out, or?
So we have, because some schools are reducing staff, we have most of those ironed out enough to where we have confidence to post and hire externally. We have had a very few involuntary moves. Those are necessary, and then even within those, we have done those early enough where we try to provide those folks opportunities so that they know they have a job, we make that move, but if they see a job that might be more interesting location-wise, work-wise, you know, we're making our best guess, but we want to get folks where they want to be. So being able to move very early on that has helped, and we've had a very minimal number of involuntary moves and expect few, very few, if any, of those moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. Okay, we'll move on to Strategic Information Services. Dr. Thompson.
Good evening. We have three items of information and three action items for you tonight, and we are going to ask on two of the action items that the board consider voting tonight, and we'll explain a little bit about why that is. I'm gonna start out with the January Communications Report, and you know, some months when we post this, we just post it for your information, but once every two or three months, we would like to kind of highlight some things and walk you through it so you have a better understanding of it. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Valles, our Director of Communication, to briefly walk you through the January Communications Report.
Good evening. I just wanted to show, highlight a few things that happened in January. We definitely had more views and traffic to our website because of the things that happened in January, snow days and safety enhancements, for sure, and senior tax exemptions, as you can see there. If you go to the next slide, thank you, Rochelle. The total remind messages, this also had to do with all of the updates that we were sending out, that is district-wide, so that involves everything we send from the district and what teachers send back and forth with families. And then the contact us emails, this is any, all of our website forms, so we received one-hundred-sixty-four emails through those website forms in January. So that, those are going straight to the school or transportation, and they just, for families, asking questions that we can help with. The next slide is just some engagement photos. I don't know if you were able, I think I saw some board members maybe sharing their photos on snow day, but this is just something we like to do whenever we get the opportunity to just engage with our families and have them share their positive experiences. Our social stats went up in January, and again, it's probably likely due to all of the updates we were sending out. The next few slides just show those popular posts or those posts that got some higher reach and engagement than others. And then our videos, this is what our communication team, Jackson, Sierra, and Michael worked on. You saw the pre-K lottery video, I think, last, the last meeting. And then our podcasts were Beyond the Bell. Hopefully, you tuned in to listen to that on Spotify or YouTube. They're great. Jackson does an amazing job. And then the next slide will just show the views that we get on YouTube, so people are watching. You see that your work sessions and your board meetings are obviously of interest, so it's very important that we keep doing these live streams like this. And then you also see that our page views for our website, normally, this is really high. Normally, they're about half that on a month, but again, if you see the top pages, you'll see what people were coming to get information for, so the weather closings and the updates on safety. And another big one always that's up there is the calendar, the student calendars are always gonna get a lot of traffic. Are there any questions about the communication report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valles. Ms. Valles and her team do a fantastic job of tracking that as they go, and so, you know, we will always have that posted for your review, but sometimes we do like to highlight that a little bit so you understand a little more about the work they're doing. Your second information item is the Hundredth Day School Count. That is just where we are at as of the Hundredth Day, which was January thirtieth. We were at fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-four students, and you can see the breakdown across locations. So for the third informational item, I'm gonna ask Ms. Persinger to come up and join me. In, shortly after New Year's of this calendar year, the state of Georgia, through the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, released the Promise Schools Scholarship List that was posted for about a couple of weeks. We had three students on that, were three schools that were on that list. That was then promptly pulled down by the Governor's Office, essentially because there were some confusion and challenges about the calculation rules, and several schools challenged their inclusion on the list. That list was then pulled down for a period of about two and a half months and was just recently put back up. And that has created a little bit of confusion in the community with people thinking this is a separate list when it's basically the same list that was released, but it covers the prior two school years, which Ms. Persinger will go into. So what we want to do briefly for you this evening is just walk through, we talked last month about the ATSI and TSI list, so we're gonna revisit how schools get placed on that list. We're gonna talk a little bit about how this list is different, and then we're gonna talk about what impact this might have. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Persinger.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening. So like you said, we're gonna do a little bit of review from last month. CCRPI is that College and Career Readiness Performance Index, that is the state's accountability measure, and we pointed out that it's got five different components that go into it, each rated on a score of zero to one-hundred for each school. And prior to the pandemic, going back to 2019, there was also an overall score that was on a zero-to-one-hundred scale that was applied. And post-pandemic, when there was a year of zero, actually, two years of zero scores at all, zero CCRPI reported, and then when they picked up again, DOE determined that they were just not gonna put that overall score, that it was more important to look at the pieces that feed into that. But then last year, House Bill eleven-twenty-two was put into play, it was signed by the Governor, and it requires the Governor's Office of Student Achievement to calculate that overall single score. And then it now requires Georgia Department of Public, Georgia Department of Education to then publish that. So there hasn't been an overall score published for many years, but then back in these 2024 scores, actually, yesterday, we got the overall scores. Now, it's something that we could take the pieces and calculate ourselves, and we can do that for our own schools, but going through every school in the state would have been more than our group could handle, so it's nice to, that those are now published. So if we go on to the next slide, you'll remember that we talked about there are also these federal school identification lists, and that's based on that there's federal funds available to states for school improvement and that each individual state comes up with the requirements to identify those schools. And so in Georgia, we have CSI, TSI, and ATSI schools, and you see those spelled out for you there, the Comprehensive Support, Targeted Support, or Additional Targeted Support. So the, there we go, sorry, the Comprehensive Support and Improvement, or the CSI scores, those are the lowest-performing five percent of all Title I schools. And when we say lowest-performing, they're just looking at that overall CCRPI score, they're literally ranking them and taking the bottom five percent. So just a quick statistics lesson, doesn't matter how well everybody's doing, somebody's always in the bottom five percent. As soon as somebody moves up, that pushes somebody else down to the bottom. So there's always somebody in that bottom five percent. Then it also includes high schools that have a graduation rate less than sixty-seven percent, or some schools that are on the ATSI list for more than six years. These schools are identified every three years. That list came out last year, and Barrow County did not have any schools that were identified on that list. Next, we have Targeted Support and Improvement list, and this is looking at specific subgroups. So basically, it goes through and mimics that CCRPI calculation, but for every subgroup, for every ethnic group, for every special education group, English learner group, economically disadvantaged group, and it looks at, it's a funneled calculation that Dr. Moten showed you last week where, or last month, sorry, where you meet on one criteria, then you make it to the next criteria, so you gotta go through three steps to be identified. And in the 2025 list, this list comes out annually, and 2025 Winder Elementary was identified for their special Students with Disabilities student group specifically. And then there's also the Additional Targeted Support and Improvement Group, and basically, they're looking at those TSI targeted groups and then looking if they also could use some additional targets. That group, again, comes out every, that list comes out every three years, so there's not a new list, but last year, Auburn Elementary was identified on that list. So those are things we have known about. And then last month, I also talked about that this Georgia Promise Scholarship was a thing that was happening, but like Dr. Thompson said, they released it right at the end of November, and then it quickly went away again, so we didn't want to share misinformation with you, we wanted to wait until we had the full published list. The reason it changed is there are some very special and targeted schools, like some online schools, there's the Atlanta School for the Deaf, there's the Atlanta School for the Blind, there are some alternative schools, online schools, those kind of things that are very targeted, and a lot of those schools were identified just because they have such special populations. So Governor's Office of Student Achievement went back and removed a lot of those special schools and then recalculated the bottom twenty-five percent, which is what they're looking at, who scores in those overall CCRPI scores, who falls to that bottom quartile. And again, remember, no matter how well everybody's doing, somebody is in that bottom quartile, and they are identified on that list. So when the newest list came out in February, we have three schools that are on that list. Those include Auburn Elementary, Statham Elementary, and Winder Elementary. It is based on two years of CCRPI calculations, and remember, I said last year, there was not a published overall calculated score, but I calculated it myself just because that's what I enjoy doing. And I will tell you that all three schools actually improved from twenty-three to twenty-four, but again, if lots of schools are improving, somebody's gotta be at the bottom, and it is an average of those two schools put together. So again, we are, teaching and learning team has already been working with those schools. We will continue our school improvement efforts and support to help identify where are those areas where we can be improving those scores, but we just wanted you to know that they were on those lists. And then Dr. Thompson's gonna share a little bit about, then what does that mean?
Thank you. So we put this graphic together for you to help make it a little clearer, because it's an awful lot of acronyms and an awful lot of lists. So what you can see is there are basically three federal accountability lists that are administered through the Georgia Department of Education, as she said, ATSI, TSI, and CSI. You can see the schools that qualify there. The Georgia Promise Scholarship is a Georgia list. It's a Georgia function put together by our legislature, and we have three schools on that list. So we color-coded that a little differently so you can see the differences. So what does this mean for those schools on the list? Well, SB two-thirty-three was designed to provide a qualified scholarship, sometimes called a voucher, for students that are being served in lower-performing schools, as the statute defines. And what it says is if you have a student who is enrolled in the enrollment, lives, resides in the enrollment zone of one of these schools during a year when it's on the list, individuals can apply for the scholarship so long as they have been residing in Georgia for at least a year. And you'll notice that does not require them to have spent that year in that enrollment zone, they could have moved from another part of Georgia, they have to have lived in Georgia for a year. And additionally, they can be a rising kindergarten student, so even if they have not been enrolled at all, if they are within, residing in the enrollment zone, and they are a rising kindergarten or they are eligible to apply. State of Georgia has about, has enough funding put aside this year for about fifteen thousand Georgia Promise Scholarships. They do not yet know how many applications they will get because that process is ongoing, which means everyone who applies could get a scholarship, but they do have some selection criteria. Once students have been granted a scholarship, they actually can retain that for the remainder of their education career regardless of if they move, if they, sorry, as long as they stay in that zone, but if they matriculate to a middle school that is very high-performing, they still retain the scholarship. Also, if the school in which they reside comes off the list, they would retain that scholarship. And the idea there is to make sure they have continuity of education through that. If the school comes off the list in subsequent years, students residing would not be eligible to apply, they would retain the scholarship if they had applied for it. Private schools have to agree to accept these students because there are, as there often are red tape that comes along with it, there are testing requirements for these students. I'll talk about that in just a second. If schools move off the low-performing list in subsequent years, then the students who have not yet been granted this scholarship will not be eligible to apply. What is the impact? The impact at this point is a little bit unknown. Of the five, as I said, private schools have to apply to take these students, and of the five private schools regionally that enroll the vast bulk of our private school students that reside in Barrow County, only two of them have thus far applied to take Promise Scholarships. That may change in the future, but as of this point, only two show up on the list. So there may be some impact in terms of we could see the loss of enrollment for some current or prospective students participating to private schools. Additionally, two of the three schools are already, as Ms. Persinger said, on lists, and they are getting extensive support from the Georgia Department of Education. There is no such support for Promise School Scholarships, or Promise Scholarship Schools, but as she also mentioned, our Teaching and Learning Department works with all of our schools regardless of their title status, regardless of their status on any given list, on the school improvement cycle, improving instruction at all levels, and they will continue to work with all of those schools. One of the things that makes this the most challenging is, and if we're hitting the point over and over again, is with a lot of areas, including CCRPI, there are specific measurable targets we can shoot for where we say we need to get the score of this subgroup of students in, say, reading above a certain threshold. In this particular case, because everything is relative... In this particular case, because everything is relative, we have no idea what targets we would need to hit in terms of improving CCRPI to not be on the bottom 25% of schools, because it is wholly contingent on what other schools in the state do. So we focus on just improving every day, making sure we're improving every classroom, making sure that we're trying to get the maximum out of our students and learning every day, because that's really the only way you're gonna be able to accomplish that. We would be happy to answer any questions you have, but we wanted to make sure we clarified what that, what each of these lists was, because it confuses us sometimes, so we knew it might be confusing to the board, so we wanted to help with that. Yes?
I want to make a comment. Being the veteran board member and going through all the state and all the different name changes for decades.
You've seen a lot of them.
I know when Bill Bramlett was on the board with me, we sat right back there in a circle and discussed, and of course, they've, the state has changed the names and tried to make it friendlier, but it used to be the failing schools is what they called. And we sat back there with Doug Garrison, Bill Bramlett, and a lot of good people then, and looked at these scores and said, what does it really mean? And we're always talking about and looking at scores, and what does it really mean? And we decided then to make progress, because we're trying to move these kids out of this lane, to move them into LEAS, to continue No Child Left Behind, and to keep moving them up and out of these different, you know, lanes and stuff. You almost, I think Bill's comment was, you almost have to fall back a year to show improvement. You have to show improvement every year, and I think that was his comment then. So it's always, it's always a catch to just, to just say, oh, we got three schools on it. Yeah, it looks, and it's a big whoa, but you've really gotta disseminate all the information, which I know from working with you two, you're like me, a numbers person, and we like that, but we gotta, you can't just look, and I know I saw some data out there, and I want to go on and squash that right there. It's not that, it's because we only go to school this many days, and we have this many days off, so we can't, because if that was the fact, and I think I saw, said this to Mr. Callaway earlier today, then we would have more schools on there failing. We all, and the whole state of Georgia, we all go to school 180, is it 180 days a year?
Seven.
So it doesn't matter how you do it, you take a piece of pie, and if you want to do it here, you still go to school 180 days. So that's not what it is. We've gotta really look, and I like how y'all have broken it down, because all this stuff changes, and I think it's to keep us confused, but y'all broke it down to, at least for me, it's a lot more understandable what we're looking at. So that's why I don't comment when people are out there saying that stuff, because until I come in here and look, what is it we're really looking at this year? What, what has made these? Because it can be a myriad of things, and y'all help bring that to us, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
So.
Thank you. Ms. Bradford?
Out of curiosity, how many kids in our school district are getting Gold scholarships? Do you have any idea?
I haven't even opened the application process.
On a regular year, I mean, that's been going, that's been around for quite a while.
Which scholarships?
The Gold Scholarship. There are, is a scholarship for people who want to take their kids from public to private now, I just was curious if people are utilizing it in this district.
I can probably find that answer for you, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
I was just curious, that we might shed a little bit of light.
I'm not sure we've ever had a school qualified for that, but we can certainly check that for you.
No, the school, it doesn't matter if the school's failing or not, if you're a public, if you're a public school student, and you want to go to private, you can apply for it. I was just wondering, how many people apply for it, if you know? Okay.
No, that's not something we usually would have access to.
Go through the private schools, but they were getting scholarships. All we know is that they left us to go to private.
Okay.
The only thing private schools required to report to us is their enrollment from students that live without our enrollment zone.
Okay, got it.
Beyond that, they don't have to tell us really anything.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I did have one question. I thought it was interesting, well, it's more like a comment and possibly a question. I did notice that, like, one school did not meet any of the CSI, TSI, ATS I, so it can still, like, a school can still be on the bottom 25% and not necessarily have any red flag, if you want to call it a red flag, or one of these, I'm not gonna call it a red flag, okay, I'll retract, I'll retract, but if it doesn't meet any of the other, like, types of school attention, basically, program.
I'm with you. So the CSI is the only one of those three that is school-wide, and that is bottom 5% only of Title I schools.
Right.
The other ones are specifically based on subgroups, so if there wasn't a specifically low-performing subgroup at a school, they wouldn't meet one of those other two lists.
Thank you.
Now, if there's one school that has a subgroup that hits it, is the whole school eligible for the Promise Scholarship, or just a sub?
At the Promise Scholarship level, that is whole school scores, and they do have some criterion in if they have more applicants for the Promise Scholarship than they have slots. They use a triage method, where they will look at things like if a student has a disability status, English learner status, things of that nature, but that's only if there's not enough scholarships to go around. Other than that, is anybody in the school is qualified. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have three action items, and for that, I'm gonna ask Mr. John St. Clair to come up and walk the board through those.
State testing next year, I just lost it. State testing next year requires the use of headsets for a new updated module for VRAISH grade levels, three through 10. We are looking for 8,170 USB headsets to meet this requirement. We're also purchasing a small pool, 85 units of standard audio jack headphones for any student device that, for some reason, their USB connection doesn't work, so that we can use them on those as well. An RFP was posted, and 44 responses were received, which I think is a record. The Low Bit Respondent Products Unlimited of Fort Lauderdale, Florida met the terms of the RFP. They were verified as a valid reseller by the manufacturer, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. I've got a breakdown of where the headsets are being distributed. We did a pilot previously with 250 headsets that we purchased for Bramlett and Kennedy, so these are rounding out the rest of the units we need. The financial impact will be $230,000, $172, $230,172.05 from ITS Splos Technology Funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Logitech headsets from Low Bit Respondent Products Unlimited of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the amount of $230,172.05. Can I answer any questions?
All right, we'll vote on this after executive session.
Yes, thank you. The next item, Dell Security Camera Servers. The bulk of the district's fleet of security camera servers are at the end of life, they're five or more years old, and are showing signs of pending failure. 18 new servers are required to replace them, one per school. An RFP was posted, and 13 responses were received. The Low Bit Respondent Rice Street Holdings failed to meet the terms of the RFP. Their response did not include various components required to actually make the server work for us in our, as specified in the RFP. And when we questioned them about that, the vendor withdrew their response. The next Low Bit Respondent Clear Connect met the terms of the RFP, they answered all the questions satisfactorily, they were verified by Dell as a valid reseller, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Just as a point of information, to give you the complete picture, we also need storage drives to put into the servers, and we compared costs and determined it was cheaper to purchase the drives independently from the servers and install them ourselves, rather than bundle them with the server's purchases. Multiple quotes were sought for the drives, and we purchased them, so 144 drives, it's eight per server, at a cost of $42,768. So that brings the project total to $162,570.60. Had we gone with a bundled, all-in-one solution with the storage already intact, installed, we would have been at $171,955,000, so we saved a bit of money by doing it ourselves. The financial impact is $116,314.92 from ITS Splos Technology Refresh Funds on this board item, the $42,768 for stored drives that we've already purchased, the total cost of the projects, $162,570.60. So the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Dell servers from Low Bit Respondent Clear Connect of Cottonwood, Idaho, in the amount of $116,314.92.
Any questions? Okay, we'll vote on it after executive session.
Yes, thank you for voting on these two items today. And then the third item, separate purchases of ClearTouch interactive panels, when totaled for the year, have exceeded the $75,000 threshold requiring board approval. This was after we ended up purchasing panels for the temporary occupation of Chi East, and the subsequent build-out of the two pod units at Appalachia since the September incident. We now need to purchase four additional panels for the Performing Arts Center, and there may be some additional one-offs for the rest of the year, although I don't have any particular requests at the moment. Schools may request them for the remainder of this year. So to be compliant with board purchasing policies, we've issued an RFP for standard pricing for panels for the remainder of this fiscal year. We received five responses. The Low Bit Respondent Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia, met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with the district previously, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. So financial impact is $19,122.28 for the four panels for the Performing Arts Center that will come from ITS Construction Funds. Any additional purchases during the remainder of this year will come from whatever budget is requesting the panel, and that will be at a cost of $4,780.57 per panel. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of ClearTouch 86-inch interactive panels from Low Bit Respondent Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia, in the amount of $4,780.57 per panel through the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2025. We do not, we're not asking for this one to be voted on today.
Move to conservative agenda.
Certainly. Thank you.
You all very much.
Thank you. All right, it's time we will go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon employment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Could I have a motion, please?
Certainly.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Callaway, second from Ms. Kelly. All in favor.
All right. We'll be back.
Our newcomers, these young men and women and their families, they come to this country, to Barrow County, to our schools, with gifts, and talents, and ambitions, and dreams, and we do our best to meet those needs, so that they can create the lives of their dreams, but also because we know without a shadow of a doubt that our community and our county is enriched by having them here as part of our community.
Newcomers Academy has been a great first step for most of those kids to come in, get acclimated, work with, with really dedicated, focused teachers, doing what we do here in Barrow County, which is meet those kids where they are, and then take them forward to be the best students, and, you know, have the best educational experience that they can.
When our students come in, they're very shy and very quiet, they don't want to communicate at all with you, they're very uncomfortable.
My first day in school was difficult for me. I didn't understand the English in here, I, I don't know what happened in this moment.
I didn't know about the culture. I needed to learn how to treat Americans, and how to treat the people here.
Everything that was stable is just shaking, 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 and you come to this new country, and everything changed.
I think it's hard, because I'm here without my parents. You, like, lost your friends in your country where you was.
I miss my grandma. I love so much her, and I want to see her, like, one more time if I can.
Very scared, sad, depressed, not very confident in myself.
I feel so, so, so stressed, tired all the time.
It's so hard, but you have to try your best if you want to improve. That's why we are here.
As the year goes on, even weeks go on, you can tell that they are happy, they're learning social skills and able to communicate.
You see every day when they come to school, the effort that they put for to learn their new language, to learn the new expectations, to learn the new system.
When I come into Newcomers Academy, the teacher, so good, the new friends, so good. It's new experiences for my heart, for my, myself.
It's like me, they come here for learn a new language, because we want to be better person.
You're thinking, like, about these new opportunities, to get a better education, to get a better life, to get maybe a good job, and start helping your family.
Some of their needs are a little more hidden, they're dealing with family separation, they're dealing with loss. You know, these kids really need someone behind them, and a lot of times, they don't have that person or people. So I think they've done such a great job at this school, just putting themselves behind the kids 100%.
It's not just the children, the students that really are served here, it's the whole family.
I think it's the best thing to know, like, Newcomer Academy, to be part of Newcomer Academy.
They are not just teaching you English, they are trying to teach you how the country is, the culture.
I think the most important goal of the Newcomer Academy is to help our students feel accepted.
Giving them a space and a place where they can try and make mistakes, but feel okay about it, I think is the most important thing.
Well, once they know that someone's behind them, they're stepping forward and doing what they need to do, and showing what they can do.
It's really taking that, that piece of being barrel bold and doing what's best for kids, and I see that so much in our Newcomers Academy. It's a real exemplar of what, what we do there.
Many of them are just so hungry to learn. Not only do they want to learn English, but they also wanted to learn the history, and the geography, and biology, and all of the other subjects that they're studying.
They are doing everything possible, and as a teacher, it just feels just amazing to see, like, I'm actually doing something, and, you know, they're reciprocating the feeling.
If you feel bad, they want to help you. If you feel that you cannot, they want to help you. If you think that you cannot, like, pass the class, they want to help you.
Newcomer is a good thing that happened in my life, because this is like, we are the family you need to learn.
I have a lot of friends, many friends, who speak different languages, who's from different countries. It's a very good experience for me.
Now I have confidence, like, just believe in myself. That's one of the things that always gonna just bring my heart, and that help you to feel like you can belong here.
Newcomers Academy did a lot, probably it made me the person that I am today.
We love the involvement, the community involvement with Newcomer, and the involvement of the newcomers with the community. The interactions are priceless. They feel their role models, they want to be like them.
They're like, wow, we're making a difference, we're, we're helping them, and they want to be a part of the community, they want to be accepted, they love being here.
I feel happy, because I got this chance to live in this country.
For me, it's many, many important.
The newcomers is like my family now, and I'm feeling strong with that.
Newcomer Academy is a big part of my life, and it's gonna be a big part of the rest of my life, too.
I love so much, this is the best thing that happened in my life.
It's amazing people, it's amazing experience, it's amazing. I love Newcomer Academy.
My name's Jaden Cooper, I'm a senior, and I go to Wyandotte Barrow High School. So growing up, I was just always outside, you know, I liked to do a lot of fishing, you can tell by my attire. So when I got to high school, I liked to choose the classes that I liked to do, so I chose agriculture to be one of my pathways, and basically, I'm getting to do exactly what I wanted to do as a kid, so it's pretty fun. So football teaches you a lot of valuable skills, like communication, accountability, and basically just trusting your teammates, because in the classroom, and in the workforce, you have to work with people that you don't necessarily like half the time, and you just have to deal with it, and you just have to do stuff like that to become successful. A teacher that's made an impression on me the most would have to be Ms. McCall, she teaches business here, and she teaches you about credit, which is a really good thing to know in life. Obviously, I just won Prong King, so I'm pretty proud of that, and I'm also proud of being an undergrad, because I, all my hard work's paid off. I'm planning to go to Georgia Southern, play a little football, and also to pursue a career in environmental engineering. Do your work on time, don't show up to class late, hang out with the right crowd, and never procrastinate.
Sims Academy is a career-prep school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools. shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County's school system's unique programs such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and STEP Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech, with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the Youth Job Training Program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness, training classes, and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supported work experiences in a variety of community business settings, as well as within common ground, the cafeteria, and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy, and independent living skills. This program has an application process, and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the Career and Technical Education Programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals, and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry, and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses, ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry, and many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes, and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
My name is Eli Salz, and I'm a senior at Wynder Barrow High School. So, I started, I grew up in Wynder. I went to Bramlett, and then I went to Russell. In eighth grade, I got started in FFA, and I really didn't get big into it until I got into high school last year. But FFA has completely changed my life and has opened many different opportunities, and I've been able to meet people from all over the state and all over the nation. It's been a fantastic experience. My experience in FFA has shaped who I am because being treasurer of our chapter, I learned that I had to respect everyone no matter who or what they look like, who they are, and it's just taught me to be a good human, be respectful, be nice to everyone, and being able to talk to anyone that comes into the room and explain what we're about and how to get involved. My favorite memory was probably last, or this year at national convention. It was my first time on airplane, and we flew to Indianapolis, Indiana to go to the National FFA Convention, and we were in the hotel right downtown, and we were roomed next to some people from Kansas, and we just stayed up all night talking to new people, making new friends, and it was just a ball. The teacher that's impacted me the most at Wynder has got to be Coach Bottoms. I started playing baseball when I was a freshman here, and he, once again, just taught me lots of lessons. He taught me to be respectful, and he taught me that you got to show up ready to work. You got to show up and be ready to do anything that's coming your way. So, the achievement I'm most proud of is my proficiency. So, the proficiency is basically a competition in FFA, and I started my own business last year making outdoor recreational furniture that's related to agriculture. So, I started a business making Adirondack chairs, picnic tables, benches, swings, anything imaginable. I even branched out and did some trailer repairs. I built a couple chicken coops, and I'm most proud of starting my own business during high school and making some money at it. So, after high school, I planned to go straight to work, and later down the road, I want to be a welder. So, I'm taking classes at Linear Tech to get my welding certificates, and just really seeing where life takes me. Some advice to me as a freshman would have been just respect all of your teachers. Once you respect your teachers, they respect you back, and then you don't have any problems. You got to stay out of drama and be nice to everyone.
And I'm Graham.
We're standing right in front of the Center for Innovative Teaching, right where a new beautiful park is planned.
This exciting new park will feature things like a splash pad, dog park, volleyball and basketball courts, destination playground, and a whole lot more.
I just know that the park will add to many great things already going on inside of Sea Fit.
And it's all happening right here at the historic old Russell Middle School Building, now called Sea Fit.
This site has been a middle school, a high school, and elementary school, and a lot of people, Barrow County natives, have gone through it, either one of those three or all three.
Arts Now, through the partnership with Barrow County Schools, opened a regional office here at the Center for Innovative Teaching. The way that Arts Now empowers its teachers through in Barrow County is teaching the teachers how to teach differently through arts integration so that children can then demonstrate and construct their learning through the arts. The superintendent, the Board of Education, and Philip and Doug were really excited about the idea of developing this property, and I have been absolutely amazed at the response we've had. So, we determined that we would be able to go forward and raise the money to do it with a public-private partnership.
The Leadership Council is made up of business representatives, as well as community members, as well as the elected officials of Barrow County.
Having my children, my family here, I'm excited to build something unique for Barrow County, something where our kids can play and enjoy and improve the quality of life here in Barrow.
A park like this, a special location like this can do so much for our county, both with quality growth and quality of life, a great place to live, work, and play.
I think we should remake the Sea Fit campus into a park because it gives children an opportunity to go outside and play more.
Parents can take their kids there, and those kids could have fun.
It gives different opportunities for different people.
So to help our, the community and the families really connect.
So, Kelsey, I was wondering how much the new park will cost?
The new park with lots of features and amenities will only cost $4 million over five years.
I can't wait to learn more.
One of the many benefits this park will bring, this community space, is its unique location in the county. It's centralized and close to downtown Wynder. So with that type of access, families will be able to go visit to and from the park, and also visit the unique shops and restaurants in downtown Wynder.
The green space it represents, along with just the amenities it's going to bring, of a place just to come and be and enjoy yourself, I think in today's world is even more important as we look at the social aspect of life and places for people to come and gather. This is everyone coming together for the good of the school system, for the good of the city of Wynder, for the good of Barrow County, and for the good of our children and our families. We're able to take some of the history of the school system and some of the history of Barrow County and Wynder, reinvigorate it, put it back together, and give our children and grandchildren somewhere to, something and somewhere to really be proud of and be a part of.
You think about the work and the development that's occurred in downtown Wynder. You see this building our future project, and as that comes together and is really a centerpiece, I can see sidewalks connecting the two, just really focused on quality of life in a number of aspects.
When companies are looking to locate here, they will also want to know what it's going to be like as a family. What are their employees going to do? What are their executives going to do? How will they spend their time? What kind of recreation do we have for their children? So this park will be certainly one thing at the top of our list when we show prospective new businesses what it may look like if they move to Barrow County. This is a prime example of something that will benefit our entire community, and it will also benefit us economically because people are going to hear about this, and they're going to want to come here. I want this to be the place that people talk about when they talk about Wynder.
And we believe we can get this done, and if in fact we do raise more than $4 million, we have a good list of additional projects that will add to this one-of-a-kind playground and destination.
The projects I'm most excited about are probably the outdoor classroom. I'm excited about basketball and the treehouse because I've always dreamed of having a treehouse. The dog park because I really like dogs.
I feel like it will be just a great concept to bring more people together.
Can't join us to build this amazing new park where community and learning play together.
With help from you and help from the community, we can make it happen.
Let's build our future together.
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 Let's build our future together!
Hi, I'm Mary Michael Hahn, and I'm the Community Director at Bethlehem Church, and we have had the privilege of partnering with every single Barrow County school for the past two months, serving faculty and staff. Lane's BBQ, provided by Bethlehem Church, with also our amazing volunteers from the church. It has been such a joy to get to be in every school, to see all the faculty and staff, and the joy that food can bring to people, and it's been amazing for our volunteers from Bethlehem Church to be in these schools, to see some of their kids, grandkids, family members. I love the partnership that we get to have with Barrow County schools because every time I get to do it, I leave grateful.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Eggersstedt. I am a pre-K teacher at Auburn Elementary in Barrow County. So, the pre-K program in Barrow County helps to prepare students for kindergarten by getting them able to socialize with others before they get ready to learn about how to read and how to function in the school system. So, after our morning meeting, we will go into center time where kids will get to choose where they want to play, like in the math center, in reading center, reading books, and in block center, building things, and in home living, where it is just like a little house, and kids will get to just interact with other students, and the teachers in the classroom are basically monitoring them and helping them through their daily lives. So, Barrow County pre-K is different from other counties because we actually do school inside of a school. We are actually able to interact with other classes, other kindergarteners, and they can see how other students, older students, are going to school, and they feel important because they're actually in the same building with other, with other students that are not their age. I think that parents should enroll their kids in the Barrow County school system for pre-K because it gives the students a sense of belonging to the school that they're going to be at, and also because we love, we love the kids, and we love to be able to interact with them and get them used to going to school. So, it makes a big difference in how they are able to go on to kindergarten. If you're thinking about enrolling, visit our website today.
Hi, my name is Kayla Zong. I'm a senior at Wynder Barrow High School. I've always been in band, and throughout like elementary school, I've always had older friends, like maybe a grade or two, mainly because my sister's two years older than me, so I've always been around the older kids, like whether it just be like by a year or two years, and most of them started joining band, and I guess I could say I kind of gave in to the, like the positive peer pressure, and we're like, try band, you know, you might like it. I would say Ms. Powell, Angela Powell, she works down in the social studies department. I think that having her my first two years definitely helped with kind of going straight into high school. She has made a lasting impression on me because she's taught me to always be myself.
All right, we will reconvene, and I'll kind of know that you don't know that now.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the personnel report as presented.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Hendricks and Ms. Brown. All right.
All right, one more part of personnel. I recommend the first contract list that we discussed in executive session with the edits discussed for approval.
Well, with a point of order, we've got to vote on that after we do the motion as second. The personnel.
Yes, we do.
We have to vote on that.
Any discussion?
Good.
All in favor. All right, and then the second, part two of our personnel report.
Part two, thank you, Ms. Kelly. The contract list that was discussed, the first one in executive session, with the edits discussed by the board, recommend for approval.
All right, so moved, sorry. Second. Ms. Hendricks and Ms. Brown, again, I'm sorry, Dr. Carey?
Yeah.
And Ms. Brown. And this is the one we have two accusing.
No, so this is the large list.
All right, okay. Any discussion? All in favor.
All right, recommend the second contract list with the edits discussed for approval.
I make a motion.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Kelly, second by Mr. Callaway. Any discussion? All in favor. And we have two board members recusing themselves. Mr. Edrich and Ms. Hendricks. Okay.
All right, next up, board members, we have our House Bill 581 vote. I just want to start by thanking the board members for their diligence and efforts in studying the impact of House Bill 581 on our specific citizens in our community. Some of you began studying the potential impact of this bill before you officially took office, and our staff appreciates it, I appreciate it, and our community appreciates it. Just want to remind the board, as a citizen, something that I'm proud of, or a few things that I'm proud of, and would like to point out, number one, as our tax digest has grown in recent years, our Board of Education has strived to work alongside our staff to reduce the millage rate. So you've seen over the years, as our tax digest has grown, our millage rate has been decreased by the Board of Education. The other, another point I would like to thank the board for is their senior exemption that they recently approved that provides tax relief for all of the seniors in our community. The other thing that I'm very proud of is the Board of Education, in order to maintain a lower millage rate this fiscal year, opted to take $15 million out of our fund balance so they would not have to have a higher millage rate for our citizens. As a superintendent, that makes me extremely proud and I'm confident that this board will continue to use the local control afforded to them to be responsive to the needs of our community by balancing the needs of our students against the burden that taxes create on our citizens. So for all of those reasons, I recommend the Board of Education opt out of House Bill 581.
Do you have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? So moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Hendrix. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bradford, second. Any discussion?
I want to make a comment. I've talked to both sides. I've been looking into this a lot. There's been times I was on the other side as well. I put a lot of thought into it and, you know, I think because of all the growth that we have coming in, looking at the longevity of our county, you know, I don't think, because there's a, why it's opt out because of the way things are written, I was very much aware of what I was voting on. I keep hearing the 70%. I was one of those 70% that voted for that. I'm also one of those that I don't have children in the school system anymore. My grandkids are in another county, but, and I'm very much on a fixed income, those that know what's going on with my husband, his pay's been cut 40% because he's in a coma right now. So I'm not here to do what's best for Beverly Kelly. I'm here to do what's best for our schoolchildren. That's what I was elected to do, to think yes of our taxpayers, but to think of our schoolchildren first. And as a previous business owner, I know what it's like to run a small business and the business first and foremost is educating our students and getting well-rounded students, whether they want to go into a four-year college, whether they want to go straight into the workforce. But I want, and I told my constituents when I knocked on 1,700 doors two years ago, when they asked me about the senior tax exemption, "Ms. Kelly, how do you feel about this? Can you get behind getting rid of the taxes for seniors?" My comment was, as a small business owner and as an accountant, if I can look at it and it won't hurt the overall product of the business and this business is educating children, then yes, I can. But if I can't, then I won't be for it. And they said, you know, that makes a lot of sense. And with looking at all of it and I look at the growth that's coming in and I also look at trying to change laws and I know how long it takes to change laws. The county I grew up in, DeKalb County, is trying their best to hang on to that FTE and I understand why. But here we are in a county that's growing and we're spending money out that we don't have for students coming in and I just don't see how we can not do the opt-out to do what's best for our students right now and for our county and for the business and the business is educating our kids and getting well-rounded, hopefully, taxpayers. I'd much rather have them educated, whether they go into a two-year school, whether they go into a four-year school, or whether they're prepared to just go right into the work environment or into the military. I'd much rather spend my tax dollars doing that than to pay my tax dollars incarcerating them because we have not prepared them. If our kids are not ready to go on, I don't want it to be the fault of this board and because we have handcuffed other boards down the road because of what we do here tonight. And so that's why I support this.
I will add one more comment just as well. I will say, just being privy to some of the data I've seen from Ms. Houston and knowing how efficient we are with our spending per student, especially considering what our neighbors are spending per student, we're on the lower end of that. So I feel like we have really upheld our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in that regard and also still trying to be generous with our teachers and the salaries and our staff as we're also the number one employer in this county. So I will say, for me, also knowing that we were trying to pass tax relief with the senior exemption, I think if we all knew that House Bill 581 was in the pipeline, we wouldn't have done a senior exemption. So I think our hands are a little tied in that regard too. There's no undoing the senior exemption at this point. So for that reason, I will be voting to opt out.
All right. All in favor. Against.
Did it, didn't it just say? You said, you said point away.
She's counting against.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Not against.
I thought she said again.
Six, three. All right.
All right, next up, we have the Logitech headsets. Recommend approval of the Logitech headsets from Products Unlimited of Fort Lauderdale, Florida for the amount of $230,172.05.
Do you have a motion to approve? So moved. Hendrix, second.
Second.
Ms. Maddox, all in favor?
Next, I have, excuse me, the Dell Server Purchase. Recommend approval of Dell servers from Clear Connect of Cottonwood in the amount of $116,314.92.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Callaway, Dr. Carey, all in favor? Ms. Carey's. All right. Our next meeting will be March 4th, a regular board meeting at 6:00. We'll see you then. Thank you.